Good, we're done, huh? Would we do a roll call vote?
Alderman Cone. Alderman Cone.
I think he's online, but he's not responding.
Alderman Cone, over.
Here.
Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boas.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Present.
Commissioner Keon.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Judge Strader. Alderman Cone.
Present.
You have a call myself.
Fantastic, uh, we called the order. You will notice that Reverend Karr is our chairman, is not able to be with us. He's on vacation this time. So I'll request a nomination for chair of the day. The gentleman to my right might be a suitable person.
I nominate Rich Bradley as acting chair.
Thank you.
Were the motions first and seconded, David? I should call a vote?
Please.
Please.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Cone, over.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keon.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
The motion passes without a present voting, aye.
With that, we appreciate that. Rich Bradley will be our chair today. Well, thank you, everyone, for your vote of confidence. Appreciate that. But the first order of business tonight is the approval of the minutes. The minutes were distributed with your packet. Take a minute to look at those. And when you're ready, I will accept a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and approved and seconded. Could you roll call vote, please?
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Cone, over.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keon.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Chair Bradley.
Aye.
Motion passes without a present voting, aye.
Thank you for the approval of the minutes tonight. So this evening, just to give you a little introduction for what we're doing. We have one action item, which is a review of a redevelopment plan and a lighting study, which has been submitted by L D R A. And there will be no public hearing for this item. And then also, we will have several informational items, follow up after that particular item. So we can go ahead with the first action item, the Baton School Redevelopment Plan. And the presentation is by Mike and Miriam.
Hi, uh, Mike Graber, planning, yay. Do you want to? Oh, that's much easier. And you're to talk about the chat number nine, 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 like, I mean, for, uh, one or eleven hundred Veronica Avenue. It's the old Baton Elementary School. The parcel's about three acres big. And it's actually two parcels or two addresses. It's eleven hundred Veronica and eighty seven twenty four Hall's Ferry. The plan is up to, provides up to fifteen years of tax payment and doesn't use eminent domain. See it here, the little triangle cut out on, uh, Hall's Ferry and Veronica. And then there's a star up there. There is a safe lot up there. That's probably the biggest, like, hand mark of the, of the area. Former Baton Elementary School is built in nineteen oh eight and closed fifteen years ago. It is technically located in the, for zoning wise, a single family, but it has a variance on it for, for building the apartment complexes there from two thousand twenty-two. And it's, the prospective redevelopment would be fifty-one apartments between seventeen one bedroom, twenty-three two bedroom, and eleven three bedroom. It is in the, I don't know. Sleepwise, it's zoned institutional preservation and development area. But anytime there's something like that, and then the institution is removed, it goes to whatever the adjacent categories are. In this case, it's the neighborhood preservation area. And again, just a little bit up where it is, that bottom picture is just kind of front facing of, of the school. And it doesn't show to a ton in these pictures, but the lighting study and the, the variants all do mention areas of deterioration and, and safety hazards for the, for the shopping area that's not seen in the pictures. Kind of see it's surrounded by pretty much all residential once you get away from that name, uh, Luke.
Thank you. So tonight, we have three guests in attendance. So Zach Wilson from San Luis Development Corporation, Jess Henry from Rice Community Development, and Tom Florin from the Lutheran Development Room. At this time, if you would like to make some comments to the Planning Commission before we open the floor for questions, please stand up, introduce yourself, and say what you'd like to say.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Jess Henry with Rice Community Development. Thanks for the opportunity to answer any questions that you have. Rice is serving as the development consultant on this development. But I've been working on this for about the last two and a half years. So if you're able to answer any questions you might have, I'll let Tom.
I'm Tom Florin, relatively new hired over at L D G. So I've been with the project since about February, late February, since we bought the building. And during April and June, I've been up there walking the property. Block Captain, Rob Foltz, he's a wonderful fellow. So, you know, he's really excited for this. I know his neighbors are very excited for this proper, this project to get done. So I, I look forward to hearing your questions and, you know, do my best to.
Great, thank you both very much. So at this time, we'll walk through and we'll do just what the chair typically does. We'll go in order. And if you have any questions or you want to pass, that's up to you. So Alderman Cone. Alderman Cone, over.
Mr. Chair, thank you for being here this evening. Everybody knows I'm crazy about Rice and I like the Rice building. And you answered the only question I had through your introduction, which is, hey, you've already been talking to the neighbors. It sounds like you have been very excited for it. So congratulations on how you are so far, and I'm looking forward.
Tracy Boas.
No questions. I just want to say, I was, I was excited to see this in the packet. We have such resources in our historic schools, so it's really great to see one being used. And we're always looking for affordable, affordable housing. So anyway, just excited to see the project move forward.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Yeah, could you just describe again the community, what's been done so far? So that'll have to go in the packet to the board.
So this project, this development was awarded local housing tax credits in December of two thousand twenty-one. That was on our third submittal. So starting back in two thousand eighteen, Chris Sherman, who's the executive director of Lutheran Development Group, really started engaging the neighborhood. So attending a lot of ROBA with the revitalization of Baton Neighborhood Meetings, engaging with the block captain, several faith leaders in the area, the older woman, both former and current. And he's really sustained that community engagement effort over, you know, what is now, you know, five, six-year period of time. And, you know, often attending neighborhood meetings at churches. He's knocked every single door multiple times along Veronica and Newby to let the neighbors know. Going on, you know, six years of a project, two and a half after funding, people start to ask, what are you doing? What's going on? When's it gonna start? And it's been a very, you know, a complex process. The building was not on the national register when Chris received his allocation. So he actually went through the listing process and then had to secure competitive allocation of states for tax credits. And in addition, with all of the other due diligence, the building is continue to deteriorate, which is both a burden on the neighborhood, but also, you know, from a project management standpoint, adds an additional layer of complexity as costs continually grow and we're constantly trying to fill, you know, a gap. But, you know, everyone has indicated they still, they want to see the project move forward. Everyone's, you know, very supportive. This will actually be a mixed income development. So we will have six units of market rate in this. It's fifty-one units total. And we have, we have eight thirty percent AMI units. So there's a really wide range of rents that'll be offered across those fifty-one units. As Mike pointed out, the one, two, three bedroom. So, you know, the neighborhood's just been very receptive of the entire project profile and just the fact that this building is, is going to get done. It's been a priority for them for a long time. It's awesome, thank you.
That's all my questions.
I forgot to say that I'm glad you guys put the three bedrooms in there. That's all we hear a lot about the need for it. So I forgot to say in my comments, thank you for that.
Commissioner Keon.
Just a quick question on clarification, some forgetting. So you were awarded like to grants in two thousand twenty-one. Are you reapplying this year?
So the, the local housing tax credit award will just kind of carry over until we close. We work, we're working very closely with M H D C on that. We are reapplying our state historic tax credits just because we have the time and there have been some rule changes to the program that make it advantageous. So we'll go in on July first and get our renewed allocation ahead of a, of a closing. And again, that's just a, one of, you know, another effort at keeping up with growing project costs to make sure that we, you know, be the largest stage for our implementation.
Sounds good. No other questions. It's a good project.
Yeah, just a quick one. The redevelopment plan area is two point six, seven acres and two parcels. And the project you're doing encompasses both parcels.
Yes, it's the whole triangle. There's a large parking lot that will reuse that'll provide fifty-five spaces for the fifty-one units. It's a street parking, but it, we are, it's, it's the whole triangle.
Commissioner Williams.
Uh, no comments with him.
Go back to Alderman Cone. Any questions? Alderman Cone, any questions? Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, I think it's a great project. I, I like it. I think you guys are doing a good job and excited to see the finished product on its own. So, so with that, unless there are any further questions, I will, and let's staff wrap it up with your recommendation.
Eleven hundred, or eleven hundred Veronica Avenue redevelopment area is found to be declared as blighted and proposed redevelopment plan in conformity with the city strategic land use plan. And PDA staff requires approval of the proposed redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, can you call a roll, please?
Alderman Cone. Alderman Cone. Alderman Cone, over.
Aye.
Mr. Boas.
Aye.
Mr. Garmendia.
Aye.
Mr. Keon.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Cone.
It's here. Sorry, yeah, can you ask your previous role?
Too late.
There hasn't been a vote. They didn't text me anything. All right, I can text you something.
Yeah, this is supposed.
Yeah.
Previous role doesn't apply when it's not a vote. Yes, previous meeting for the minutes.
Can you comment?
It's on.
You're right.
Alderman Cone, over. It's to, um, your motion, you need to draw your second. That was a second, sorry.
They were through their remote.
Draw my second again.
That will, second.
Call for previous role.
Yeah.
So we have to make all the motions.
That's why we just, yeah, they just require the motion in seconds, so.
Okay, so we call the previous role. Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Any objection?
We're not, we're not.
Any objections? No objections.
Congratulations, thank you.
Okay, we got that one done. Well, let's move on to the next item, which is the update on the formation of the committee to develop additional rules and procedures. So Don, you're going to speak on that one.
I'm going to speak on that. I ran out for a minute and I promised I did not run back decisions. Some of you might find them useful, though.
Go to the front. Thank you, Chair.
I can have one now and take one. I get more than one, so I'll eat one now.
Sure. So in, in the intervening time, Derek Strader has, has conversed with us, conversed with David. And he wrote a letter that I'm going to read as to a status of where we are in an update and moving forward regarding the formation of a committee of development. So we'll. That was an absentee vote. So to everybody, the members of the Planning Commission, as a refresher, the City of St. Louis Planning Commission is a legally constructed body charged and formally adopting plans to guide the city's evolution, an independent review of all zoning policy, zoning map changes, blocking studies, redevelopment plans, other policies and decisions that impact the future of St. Louis's rural environment. The Planning Commission, within the framework and requirements set by the state, the local law, is a citizen-led body that also serves as the city's zoning commission. A core purpose of the Planning Commission is to adopt plans and review policies towards the goal of coordinated development in accordance with assisting future needs. Best promotes the general welfare, that general welfare as a major part of this work is to review and recommend proposed actions for their conformity with adopted plans and best practices, guided by professional staff research and analysis. Continuing from the, from the chair, having met with council and being authorized by the Planning Commission, we have determined an appropriate process according to legal guidelines and in accordance with the Robert's Rules of Order to constitute a committee to author a list of recommended policies and procedures for the Planning Commission to consider and act. And council is here. As chair, I have designated the following to serve on the committee. Commissioner Jake Bep, citizen member. Commissioner Tracy Boas, citizen member. Commissioner Grace Keon from A and E N A is a member from the mayor's office. Commissioner Christina Garmendia, E and A member from the, from, excuse me, the president's office, Grace, of course, is from the mayor's office. And Commissioner Earl Strada is chair. Serving as staff advisors would be David Meyer and Miriam Keller. He concludes, it is and has been my pleasure to serve as a citizen member of the Planning Commission for over ten years as chair in excess of seven years. Earl Strada, chair. So the work that was in between in council, in consultation with council, Earl convened meetings and working sessions. And this is the consummation of his result and his authority to, as an act of this committee. So I like to open the floor for discussion. So the bottom line is, is that if everyone agrees with what's happening here, we can, we can do an action item and we can vote to approve this and move forward with this plan. But let's just do an open floor discussion. We don't need to go through the list. If you have a question, just bring it up.
Another question. But I hope we can send out a doodle right after this to get some meetings maybe scheduled when Earl returns. So we can begin a meeting and maybe have something to say at the July meeting of the Planning Commission or to give an update on.
Yeah, I think one of the things, as we mentioned, would be staff advisors, both David and Miriam. And Miriam will take on the task of, in Earl's absence and in probably general, general procedures, of coordinating meetings.
Or need meetings, providing the committee what is needed for them to continue their work. Okay. And as the Board of Aldermen's representative, I pledge to consult with Alderman Cone and Alderman Cone on their considerations that should be addressed in the rules. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, and David, you have a final edge you think we should do is?
Well, I'll, I'll just note that the reason why I think there needs to be a vote is because the previous motion from last month was not crystal clear, delegating the authority to compose the committee and then the met. So this is sort of a, not necessarily a belt and suspenders motion, but just to make it clear that this committee has now been comprised and is condoned by this board. So the motion would just be to approve the committee as presented and to tell it to go for it, proceed.
So that's, that's really a request on the table is, you've seen it from the chair as to the members. Want to add in, convene, move forward. If we like a motion from the Planning Commission. So I'll ask if there's a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve. Can you call a roll, please?
Previous role, please.
Previous role, there you go. Is there any objection to previous role? Or, thank you. All right. The next item on the list is the overview of the potential near-term zoning code updates and PDA staff by Miriam, presentation.
So this item, I'll try to present briefly. And just, this is a follow-on from the last meeting's discussion where I presented this kind of list of items that have come up and then shared with commission members a little bit for background. So I just wanted to provide that also during the meeting and offer an opportunity for, for questions and other input from the commission. So here's the list, and I'm going to kind of walk through these theme by themes. And again, the purpose of this presentation is not to determine priorities, simply shed more light and kind of bring some daylight to the discussion around possible priorities. I have, and I will present here, some possible prioritization criteria. This might be something, this may be something that the committee takes into consideration as part of this work, the committee now formally established. And then again, like I mentioned, receive commissioner feedback and questions just in the interest of kind of developing commissioner understanding of our ongoing work to keep our zoning code current and updated. So to start, I kind of listed a, a range of criteria that I think we, at a, at a staff level, have had in our minds as we have organized our work and thought about our workload. And some of those were referenced in the, kind of, the material shared with commissioners. So number one, you know, reduce the number of variances that are both consistently heard on board of adjustment agendas and also granted by the board of adjustment, allowing for, you know, the, the types of developments in our city that, you know, we're consistently allowing, but to move forward without the need for a special exception. And this would also have the effect of widening the board of adjustment agenda and freeing up staff time and particularly zone exception staffs time to support comprehensive work. You know, including and maybe especially the zoning code overhaul to begin next year. So that's one item. Also to strengthen the competitiveness of competitiveness of the Northside-Southside MetroLink Expansion Project. And that, of course, is very directly related to the Green Line text amendment that was brought before the commission and recommended by the commission a couple of months ago. Also, of course, to act on all the previous studies now that that new alignment has been put into place. A third is to help implement recently completed neighborhood plans. A fourth is to complement other work underway to address issues and to adapt to changes in state law. So those are four possible prioritization criteria. And again, I think this could be among the things that the, the committee discusses. This is not a hard and fast list. And then others, not noted in the memo, but I think that bear mentioning sort of adopt and/or align with clearly established best practices. I think there are some issues where it's, you know, pretty straight, straightforward or maybe more clear, there are more resources available about the, what makes sense. The sixth item here, we've been doing a ton of engagements through the strategic land use plan process. And even though that plan is not yet complete and of course, not yet formally adopted, we do know a lot through that process about the kind of concerns and priorities that are rising to the top in community discussion. So I think that's probably worth thinking about. Again, align with priorities set by the mayor's office and the board of Aldermen. I'm not here to speak to those today. That, that's not at all my point, but I, I think that, you know, that it's part of the possible prioritization. I think eighth is to strengthen public confidence of the role of planning zoning and the Planning Commission's work, and maybe particularly as we're about to undertake some very comprehensive zoning updates. After completion of the Strategic Land Use Plan update, I think building up public trust and understanding and confidence, it really does merit discussion and evaluation as we think about the work. Then, of course, some issues are more complex than others and some issues will take more time than others to identify the best and most appropriate policy approach.
And Miriam, I might be good time for you to mention the zoning staff.
Yes, yeah, so Evan Winkler of the zoning section is with us tonight and didn't want to put him on the spot necessarily, but there are several. I, I imagine that as we get into it and if commissioners have questions, some may be best answered by Evan, who, along with Mary Park Burton, is just very intimately familiar with the intricacies and challenges on the administration side of our code, which PDA has an awareness of, but not the intimate familiarity with, of course, that the zoning section does. So, hello, Evan. So.
Hear me?
Yeah, great. Welcome back. So I'm going to kind of step through theme by theme here, and some of these are very much overlapping, by the way, right? So, you know, parking requirements, for example, impact walkability and the character of place, but also housing affordability and housing diversity. So I'm thinking broadly about the issues that are part of that theme. And you're going to see this theme to theme that I've kind of identified the current barriers, kind of the current status of our regulations and, and work to explore updates. And then also the goal or intent of possible updates towards zoning regulations. So current barriers and status here, I think, in combination and kind of in a level of frequency, minimum lot size, parking requirements, and accessory dwelling units are common items on board of adjustment agendas. And they are often, these variance requests are often granted. And they are often, these variance requests are often granted, and sometimes with conditions. And this is generally kind of a good sign or indicator of the need to review regulations to make sure that we are keeping up with the, the challenges and trends that are actually impacting land use and how it all. On the second point here, of course, special residential uses and short-term rental regulations have both within the last year, if I remember correctly, been initiated by the Planning Commission, but have not passed, such as in the case of Alderman, I mean, the case of special residential uses, zoning regulations there, either they've not passed or things may have technical issues. And to, for these items to advance in the legislative process would require re-initiation of regulations by the Planning Commission. So that's kind of the current status of those things that have come before the commission previously. The goal and intent of updates kind of on these themes would be, number one, to increase the diversity of the city's housing supply, reduce barriers to quality urban infill, and also to clarify and standardize regulations or conditions that when we are going the variance route, some of these things can vary site to site or project to project, but a zoning update, an update in the regulations is an opportunity to standardize those conditions where they're necessary. And number two, you know, obviously meet on met housing needs and reduce or manage price pressure. Number three, facilitate intergenerational living and aging in place. And I think accessory dwelling units have, among these other options as, as well, or other ideas as well, an important role to play in that. And I just want to pause real quick to flag that these first three goals here on this slide have like resoundingly been important themes in the Strategic Land Use Plan process. In almost every discussion, some number of these themes will, will come up. And then the fourth, which I think is also important, but maybe a little bit more kind of hidden from view, is that these regulatory updates, if we were to make them, could help accelerate or facilitate neighborhood revitalization and service improvement efforts, including city-led and city-funded investments like home art funding, the possible Section 108 loan program and, and others. And it's just an opportunity to kind of coordinate with all of the other really valuable revitalization investment we're underway in the city. So that was the first theme. On the second theme here, walkability and TOT. So I flagged here the Green Line text amendment, again, that, that has been recommended by the Planning Commission. Also to tighten gas station and maybe also convenience store regulation is an idea that has been identified. Reduce parking requirements, again, here as walkability context, and then Delmar Devolver reform-based code, I'll explain there. So I'd say the current barriers and status of items related to this theme. Like gas stations and also convenience stores can, I'm not going to say do or always, but can contribute to nuisance issues in the community. And then also in particular places, gas stations can tend to dominate the landscape, you know, highly visible locations in our city and maybe two plus together, or by whatever other measure sometimes undeserves. Overbuilt parking also can inhibit walkability while also raising development costs, exacerbating urban heat island effects and flooding concerns through having more impervious surface in our city than it might truly need. And to, to require that may not make, especially if it's not needed, may not be helping us from the environmental justice point of view. And I think together, too, with these walkability concerns, but especially with TOT, there's an opportunity to facilitate housing, jobs, and new services nearby from planned transit stations as the TOT text amendment that was initiated by the Planning Commission seeks to do, but also existing. We'll get to an item in a moment that's more relevant to existing stations. So of course, the goal and intent would be the kind of inverse of some of these barriers, right, to improve walkability, to advance environmental justice. If we work on restricting the prevalence of gas stations, or if the part of that concern or kind of exploration would also be to strengthen tools within zoning, but in coordination with tools outside of zoning, to strengthen the tools available to the city to address nuisance issues and concerns that can overlap with gas stations or convenience stores. And then on specifically on the Delmar Devolver reform-based code, this work, and we're going to hit this again in the next theme actually, has been really guided by the Skinkred Devolver Neighborhood Program and has the development of some draft regulations has really been led by the neighborhood in coordination with a consultant. So it's an opportunity to embed those results into our code in the near term and/or as part of the code update generally. The third theme here is around plan implementation. So the kind of current status here is that after extended neighborhood-led efforts to develop form-based district regulations, these regulations are now fully drafted and can enter kind of a, the standard process of interdepartmental review. This, this is something that can undertaking for staff or would need, and so it's kind of important context as we think about prioritization. I think both with the existing transit lines and also proposed, there have been, there's been a lot of work in the community to study transferring development opportunities to the plan and putting those ideas into action. And in the case of the Green Line, now that that alignment is adopted, is an opportunity. I'll skip down here. In the legal plan, that of the kind of neighborhood plans is one recently adopted that identifies specific rezonings. But additional technical work is needed to really work that through and consider those rezonings for formal adoption. And by the way, it is kind of within the Planning Commission's authority to initiate rezonics, as well as zoning text amendments. And so the kind of macro goal here would be to ensure that neighborhood planning and other community community planning work is implemented, and that the regulations guided by those plans are in effect to guide future development and other change. So to implement plans. And then a fourth theme here, and this was a little bit of the commission's discussion next week, are some emerging ideas about adapting to the changing landscape around marijuana and the land use questions, opportunities related to legalization of medical as well as recreational or adult use marijuana. Three ideas here to, that have arisen, to extend dispensary hours of operation, such as a planning commission discussed last week, to facilitate or establish cannabis cafes as a new type of land use. And also to potentially revisit dispensary distance requirements, it's an idea that emerged in the last legislative session. And so the kind of status here is that we are sixteen months into the legalization of dispensary use and other comprehensive and adult use marijuana cases in the city. And this is a kind of pretty quickly changing landscape. State law is not just law, but the kind of licensure is being updated. We are still trying to understand this as we study the potential to change dispensary hours of operation, but it is likely that more licenses will be granted into the future and maybe in the near term here, as state law and licensing practices change. And there is a desire also to revisit and expand the regulations adopted last year. So hours of operation, these spacing requirements that have come up, and the, the idea about cannabis cafes, and like explicitly facilitating those or explicitly allowing those in our code. And you know, potentially exploring, do they need their own regulatory approach? So the goal here, and I guess this is a kind of staff analysis, right? The goal of looking at these items would be to generally align with or understand how our regulations relate to those of adjacent jurisdictions and peer cities to adapt to this changing landscape regarding the kind of market, which appears to be very deep for this new type of product in the city, and how new licenses are being granted, where people tend to want to operate with those new licenses. And also to understand the connections between these land use regulation issues and other related legal and regulatory issues, because of course zoning is not the only kind of relevant or available tool, or not tool, but kind of legal question as relates to this kind of landscape related to comprehensive marijuana in the city of St. Louis. Can I, can I add something here?
Okay, just another goal, too, is to more have our policy more closely aligned with the majority of residents' perspectives. Do, like, what their perspectives are. It's not just like aligning with peers. What we consider for marijuana, too, it's around economic, becoming economically competitive and being more attractive for, to attract these tax businesses to our region. So it's not exactly like aligning with peer cities, but.
Yeah, I think that, that's a fair point, right? Not just align with or match up with, but understand how our regulations compare to others and determine, well, how do we want them to compare to others? I mean, I'll say, as just a community member and somebody who's been listening to, I, I think there are, there's a whole range of public points of view on these issues. And in the Strategic Land Use Plan process, I, I wouldn't say that this is something that has come up much. And so I don't personally have a strong, like, finger on the pulse of the public point of view on this issue, but I, yeah, I think that is a sort of across-the-board point. So it's like, what are our values and priorities as a city, and how can we express those in our land use regulations?
And one of the aspects of pure cities is lesson learned. Sometimes we'll hear of a pure city, oh, we did this, and then nine months later, we did it differently.
So kind of in closing, before I stop talking, I, I just want to, again, like, the purpose of this presentation was not to ask the Planning Commission to arrive at priorities or anything like that. I just think it would be valuable context as the commission and commissioners kind of enter into this question of prioritizing future work around zoning issues. And yeah, as the commission knows as well, we are about to, within a year or six months, start a process of reviewing our entire code, top to bottom, to identify updates kind of with the foundation of the Strategic Land Use Plan and adopted neighborhood plans.
And the corollary to that is the process to procure the consultants to help with that work takes staff time to prepare and do that exercise. And we're in the midst of that, so we can get this going as soon as possible. Okay, so we also have Evan Winkler online from the zoning section. If you have any questions, we'll open the floor up right now. Just to can informally ask those questions, that'd be great.
Um, I don't have any questions. I will say for all of these priorities, you know, there's a valve to allow people to move forward, which essentially is our variance process. But that variance process is not the norm across the region or across the country. So there's a lot of work to be done on all of these priorities, and as zoning staff, we want to do the work. But yeah, I mean, we're limited. So I do appreciate the, the effort to kind of prioritize how we start to review and how we work on these things. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Evan. Any other questions for Miriam or Evan?
And I'll make one comment. I'm pretty confident with the momentum we have as a city in doing things such as the SLU, the interest we have in the Board of Alder regulations, that with the RRP for the zoning overhaul, we'll get really quality submissions to help do that and achieve really fine product long overdue.
There's no more questions on this topic. We'll move on to next, which is the introduction of transportation and mobility planning process. Scott from PDA is going to make a presentation here.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, my name's Scott Ogilvy, program manager, planning group design agency. And happy to give the Planning Commission kind of an initial overview of the transportation and mobility plan process, project, which has begun, and we are working diligently at it. And so want to bring Planning Commission members, just give them an initial briefing on the project so far. Kind of the headline of the TMP is that as of today, the city does not have a citywide transportation plan. It's not currently, for the most part, expressed as part of the comprehensive plan, although there are elements in the land use plan, like the Green Line right now, and there is a downtown transportation plan. So we do have some transportation elements, but we don't have it as a citywide framework. So a big task or initiative in the TMP is to develop what I call the values, vision, and goals for the city's transportation and mobility system. And to develop those in a consensus way that takes into consideration residents' desire, what the city views as important infrastructure priorities. And also, you know, thinking about those things in terms of, you know, the real constraints around budgets and how, how many projects we could reasonably do in any period of time. We, we do want to establish clear priorities for a safer, better-maintained transportation network across the city. We want to, in a very rigorous way, find out from residents what their priorities are, how they want to get around St. Louis out in the future. We want to document that across the city, across demographics across the city. And important to highlight, this, this project is an activity funded through our funding through 771650. A key companion in a way to some of the infrastructure projects that were funded with our funding as well. So just kind of an overview of outcomes. We're looking for a unified vision for citywide mobility. It's sort of a guiding North Star statement around that. Prioritized, and that's an important word, prioritized actionable mobility projects to pursue over various periods of time. I think a really important tool we're going to build, I think something people are really looking forward to, tools to communicate about our current and future transportation projects, primarily to, to the public, but also to partner agencies internally and across city staff. We hope and expect the TMP will eventually be adopted by the Planning Commission to become part of the city's comprehensive plan. But in a, in a way, it's a little distinct from the Strategic Land Use Planning process in that there are likely to be elements of the TMP which are not just adopted by the Planning Commission, but might be adopted by departments or agencies such as BPS as their own guide or policy or guide or policy, or potentially even other relevant departments across the city. Just to, to note, the development of a citywide transportation plan is something specifically contemplated in the authorizing ordinance for planning and design agency and the planning commission. So we're really excited that now we can fulfill this element, which has been contemplated for quite some time. We've got a great team on the project that includes very experienced local firms, but also some firms with a more national perspective. All of them are experienced in planning projects in St. Louis and in delivering projects in St. Louis. So there's a really good mix of local knowledge, but also some really relevant experience from other cities, Chicago, Detroit, and the Midwest, where some of these firms have done a lot of work as well. So here are some, some key tasks. So public engagement is obviously a big task. It has begun a little bit, but a lot of the engagement so far has really been internal engagement with city staff and with peer agencies. Because a little distinction again between the strategic land use plan and TMP. A lot of the elements in the strategic land use plan are envisioned by the city, envisioned by the planning commission, but are sort of carried out by private development. In the TMP, a lot of the execution of the plan over time is done by the city itself through infrastructure projects or services. And so we want to make sure there is a broad and deep understanding among city staff of this project. So we've been talking to people in BPS and Streets Department and the Parks Department and other relevant agencies. High State, Gravers, Greenway, MoDOT, all the groups or agencies that are doing work in the city private. We're pretty far into this sort of data task, assets and benchmarking. We are very far in actually already into the safety action plan because there was a lot of overlap in what we planned to do with. Use the volume of my voice now that the AC is. A lot of overlap with the project East West Gateway is working on to develop a regional safety action plan. We're, we are sharing the data consultant across those plans. So we are taking the work that East West Gateway has done, which is, which they've almost completed and which we expect East West Gateway Board will adopt in June, later this month. And that analysis is really good. We are going to add some St. Louis specific aspects to it. And we're, it's a, it's a big leap forward, I think locally and regionally, in having really relevant data on where we have the most concerns, which streets we have the most concerns about safety outcomes on. And we can use it in the future to help prioritize safety improvements and projects. This week, we began in earnest this policy and ordinance review where we talked to city staff across departments and some other stakeholders about existing practices, policies and ordinances. Developing a list of things we can kind of hone through to look at what is working, maybe what is not working, maybe enhancing things that are already practices, kind of elevating them, but also looking at ordinances that may be not aging so well and need updates, or not addressing things we'd like to address today. There is the street typology guide, which is a big topic in which we have not really begun work on, but will begin work on in the coming months. And the goal of the street typology guide is to help us envision at a guidance level on what the desirable components of streets are across the city. And to help, you know, whenever we are thinking about a project, this can kind of be a foundation for designing that project in more detail through, you know, capital process. It's also going to include things like a bike network update. So thinking about like what the city's bike network should look like. Incorporating projects that we already know about into our comprehensive plan. And a great example of that are projects like the Brickline Greenway, which we're working very closely on with, with Gravers Greenway, but is sort of their plan today. And so we will take those routes and we'll put them in our own planning documents so that there's really alignment across the things we produce and the things Gravers Greenway is producing. And other projects like the Houdamann Greenway, or what they're calling Greenway on the tracks now. Same, same type of idea where we want that, not just on G R G maps, but we want it on our maps. Project timeline, we, we began in March. We are, I think an important thing to note is that we are about to get into a lot of the public engagement this summer through, you know, we have a, a big scope in public engagement. It includes things like telephone surveys, you know, project open houses, but then also having the project team at existing meetings or events to spread knowledge about the project across the city. Just some things we've completed to date. The website is up, so check it out, tmp-stl.com. We had great workshop with a lot of city staff. We had a partner agency workshop, the East West Gateway High Injury Network. And our own analysis of that is well underway. We're doing a series of stakeholder interviews early to really kind of inform how we talk about certain aspects of the project and questions we ask to the broader public. That's underway. Practice policy and ordinance review has begun. And one of those ordinances is the complete streets ordinance, which had already had an update to the ordinance introduced at the end of the last session from the Board of Alderman. And so through working collaboratively with Alderman Schweitzer on that project, we were able to sort of take some ideas and fit them into what we think will be this transportation mobility frame, framework. Working with her to make that update align more closely with this coming mobility plan. Just a little more information on current work. One thing I'll highlight is we have the application open for the community advisory committee, which is a citizens advisory committee that will periodically meet to advise on the project. We have, as of a couple of days ago, more than 70 applications we've taken in. In the next few weeks, we'll start selecting that advisory group. But of course, we want a group that's very representative of the city. We want to make sure the group is representative of different mobility experiences across the city. So we encourage people to spread that far and wide. So we have a really excellent group of people to choose from. And also coming this summer, which I mentioned a little bit, is a statistically valid public survey. Really important aspect of this is that when we talk about transportation projects, there are definitely some known go-to stakeholders who we talk to things about. But we want to make sure we are getting beyond that in terms of reach. And we want to make sure we get a really representative sample of what generally speaking, people's priorities are for transportation in the city. And that's sort of weighing priorities, things like, you know, safety or capacity, new projects or maintenance. Those types of questions to get a feel for what residents generally are seeking. There's our website. That's a video, looks, you know, better on the real website. Here's a, here's a screen grab from that high injury network work, which once East West Gateway adopts it, all this, this is just a screenshot, but all this data is going to become public across the region. And I think can really help inform decision-making on where our safety priorities need to be. We've kind of looked at their data analysis. It's very rigorous. It's consistent across the entire region. They've done work to make sure this is replicable and they can keep it updated because these things, you know, change as you do projects and as time goes on. So this is really good work. It won't be a static snapshot, we hope. It'll be something that's updated every year, every other year, and can really inform work across the city. I will mention already though, that, you know, this type of work is something the city's done internally already to some extent. And a lot of the city's existing projects that are already funded are on these high injury streets. Not all of them, but there is very close alignment in the things we're already doing as a city with where we have the biggest problems in terms of safety on the street network. Action shots from one of our stakeholder meetings. So goals alignment, this, this is a sort of important way, I think we're talking about the project. You know, obviously in terms of how cities and urban areas think about transportation, there's been a big evolution over the last thirty to forty years. I think we know that for a long time, you know, post-World War II, until maybe the nineteen nineties, most transportation planning really centered around the car. We have built out a great network for cars across the city. And there are other things people, I think, have become more interested in over time. Just thinking about multi-mobile networks across the city, streets as not just elements of transportation, but as one of our most, our biggest and most valuable public space systems. So these are just, I think, some of the concepts that we expect to embed in the plan. Upcoming opportunities, these are some internal focus groups we've been convening again to help frame the project. Public survey in June and the public, the, the more public facing aspects of the project were really out in the community will begin later this summer. And here, especially these pop-up, these open houses, pop-up projects that are coming. And skip ahead, I think I talked about a lot of this already. Safety action plan work. Policy and ordinance review, which we have begun. Street typology guide, which I touched on. And here we go. Really key here, I know this is just a slide we've stolen from the sloop process, but just to make sure we all understand the, you know, the big picture of the comp plan and how we are building out the comp plan, which these individual projects, with these individual projects. The timing alignment between the sloop process and between this TMP is really good. Having the sloop ahead of this process is really good. We're thinking in terms of where these projects intersect the most. We're thinking about that street typology guide, which is very related to the land use plan, the updated land use plan. And we're going to be working across these two planning teams. These two project teams are starting that very soon to make sure those things are aligned and relevant to each other. And when I think we come back for kind of the next project update, I think we'll be here and kind of summarizing the overall project. I think the next project update several months from now to the planning commission will include some more detail. So things we're hearing from, from the public and sort of actions we've taken so far. And so looking forward to doing that maybe late summer, early fall timeline as we get data from those service. That is the end of the overview and happy to answer questions if there are any.
Thanks Scott for the great presentation. Questions for Scott on the TMP planning process?
Yes, um, as part of the policy review, will it also include policies like work capital?
Yes, so the policy and ordinance review is a really important task. So the way I am thinking about this project is that during the period where we have this consultant team onboard, we feel like there is an opportunity to make some incremental changes in some of these policies. So they don't all have to wait until the project is done. And I think the High Injury Network is a really good example of that. As East West Gateway adopts that and as we kind of review it, we can potentially adopt that prior to the end of this, this process. Now, I think practice informal, policy formal, or, you know, at the department level, ordinance, you know, legislative. So I think, I think overall, in terms of how the city thinks about capital processes and how it thinks about funding projects, absolutely, this planning effort will look at that. And I, I would say it's even a little bigger than just work capital because work capital is only one funding source. But that might be an area where, you know, there is a, a menu of potential ways to go. Because just adopting this plan won't change, you know, the work capital process. That's an ordinance and that has to be done, not the planning commission, you know, not internal BPS, but at the Board of Alderman and the mayor's office. So, but I think we'll have some, some, the, the plan will develop some thoughts on potential direction there.
Yeah, I just, I wonder, I'm just thinking about like the planning commission could make recommendations on ordinance that's not just in the zoning chapter. Planning and zoning chapter could be something like that, so.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes out.
Um, and I, some of my questions are already answered about like youth engagement. That's one of the more challenging groups to reach. But I think with just how hard it is for youth to navigate the city, especially with the lack of buses for school, school buses, it's just a huge issue. So I hope that they have a very strong voice in this project in particular.
Rich? Part of this is in your lane and has been for a while. Any comments, observations?
So I made my commentary in an interview to the team. My general thoughts are we selected an outstanding team to do this work. It's long overdue. We need a holistic approach. We need to look at city as a whole. I think we need to fund things properly so we can get things done properly. Shouldn't all fall on the back of, you know, certain orders and work capital. And, you know, some places get it and some don't and all these things. So I, I just want to say, you know, Scott's doing an outstanding job leading the effort. But all the commentary is definitely good because it's all the things we need to look at, you know, make things work smoother.
One, one thing I neglected to mention in the presentation is that there's kind of a core team on this project of city staff. So it's planning, it's BPS, it's the Streets Department, Office of the Stable and Mayor's Office through, through Grace. So the, the, the planning process is being managed, I think, across departments that most regularly touch on mobility issues.
And one of the things, as I look at maps and think about things, think about mobility, I'm asking everybody, we're using a new term here, mobility. Let's make sure we give it the definition so that we all know what that means. So we don't get too convoluted in that. And second is, is the people aspect is in terms of there are folks that geographic based data, we've even used some data of knowing from the census where there are concentrations of census blocks or tracks where people have relatively little access to vehicles. And what that means to mobility and transportation, so, so making those plugs.
I just want to offer my help with the community engagement piece because, you know, I'm learning so much more about this. I've reached out to you all, Sarah and you all, about the different, more now my constituency basis and to this type of where the accessibility, the mobility, the transorgan, you know, that kind of stuff. So as I learn about it, I would love to help you Scott with the community engagement piece with getting it out however I can. Not just in the tent ward, but, you know, that's where I could really put it, anywhere for that matter.
Yeah, I think more of the projects, sort of schedule of public engagement is coming soon. And we'll make sure that yourself and, you know, all the other people have a chance to participate and promote those events.
And one of the things back to what Chris, Christina was talking about, in the map, not the map, the strategic subtle bubble map that we have with the, with the lines around it for comprehensive plan and topics is the ability to weave in under comprehensive planning law, some of those types of reviews on those other aspects.
Any other questions for Scott on the TMP planning process?
One more item up, one more.
Thank you, Scott. Last item is update on other major planning initiatives, Miriam.
Hit a few real quick and then let, or ask, welcome Jonathan to share Billy's neighbor point. So we shared this kind of, I don't know what you call it, timeline of course, but different, better word for it, of all of the different types of. different, better word for it, of all of the different types of planning initiatives we have underway now. Yeah, the timeline for many of these things like that has shifted a little bit, but this is kind of the big picture. And so I'm going to hit a few of these to keep just commissioners up to speed on how everything is going and what to expect next. So Strategic Land Use Plan, we had of course a very detailed update to the commission at last month's meeting. And starting next week, we are about to kick off the next round of engagement. And there's going to be a lot. And this round is focused on input around the detailed map. So commissioners, remember, we kind of had the framework map, sort of diagram of the city. And that is in the process also of being converted to a more block and in some cases parcel level map. So that's, you know, the rubber's really hitting the road here in terms of where these designations are landing on the map. And we're doing a big push of engagement in the next couple of months around this. So we have several workshops scheduled so far and others are still being scheduled. We have both four generalized workshops focused on different parts of the city at the macro level. But then of course, there are also kind of tricky spots coming up in this planning work where the direction is, maybe there are a few different ways that things could go. And so we're also organizing more specific place-based workshops in specific geographies where these tricky issues are emerging. And we have scheduled several of those already. And then several others actually overlap really directly into geographies where we're going to be kicking off neighborhood planning. And so we're taking a little bit more time to schedule those so that those sections can be more closely aligned with the neighborhood planning process and kind of be maybe a good segue into the neighborhood planning process from the city. Because we don't want to come at people talking about different plans and not be able to talk about how they fit together. So a lot of workshops coming up. We are excited to provide another presentation to the Housing, Urban Development, and Zoning Committee of the Board of Aldermen next week. Thank you, Chairwoman, for having us. We're excited to share that work. And all of the workshops that are scheduled are now posted online. And I just wanted to share too that last night is one example, but where we had like a really great session actually in this room with the Youth Council. And we have previously had a session with the Mayor's Youth Cabinet and are going to have another in a couple of months. And I just want to, I think, recognize the contributions of, you know, kind of young people in these discussions, just really so valuable to kind of hear their take. They're going to be here dealing with the decisions that we make today. So that was a lot of fun last night. Zoning code updates. Some updates here is that a request for proposals is being written now and a selection committee is being formed for the official procurement process or the zoning code overhaul is the term we're using. Yeah, I see a clap for Moven. Go team. And this is, we're really leaning into this. That's like an interdepartmental effort, right? The zoning section has so much expertise to bring to bear. And so, yeah, PDA and zoning are both really looking forward to this work. Another item as relates to TOD is that some preliminary work regarding sort of detailed regulations for transit areas is actually underway as part of the SLUPE process. So while we're thinking about land use, while we're thinking about transoring development and with the knowledge of the Green Line, we are kind of getting that work going now for it to be kind of embedded within the zoning code updates alongside many, many other updates. So just very exciting. I'll hand over.
Thank you, Miriam. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jonathan Oper, City Planning Executive for Neighborhood Planning with the Planning and Urban Design Agency. And we have hit some milestones in neighborhood planning. We'll start with the Project Connect first. So this is a project for six neighborhoods near the NGA that have been doing neighborhood planning since December 2021 with the St. Louis Development Corporation. They're in conjunction with the Planning and Urban Design Agency. So last year, there was a pause and roughly around July of last year where the consultants, former consultants were let go. And there's hiring of new consultants. So that contract should be executed in the next few weeks and will be ready for a relaunch in July, or relaunch, not a completely restart, but with new consultants on board are ready to get started again with the neighborhood and adoption plan, we hope by December. The other milestones we have had, so Planning and Urban Design Agency put out a request for proposals for three neighborhood planning areas, which are Planning Area 1, the Ville Greater Hilton Kingsway East. Planning Area 2, Walnut Park East, Walnut Park West with Mark Twain. Planning Area 3, Baden and North Point. Those, all those three will be began this year. The Ville Greater Hilton Kingsway East, we're actually preparing for now. And we will actually start with consultants next month in July. Walnut Park, the Planning Area 2 cluster, we will start in August along with Baden and North Point in October. So the milestones with just getting those contracts executed, we now have our consultants on board. Happily, we'll say that for the Ville Greater Hilton Kingsway East, we have Lamar Johnson Collaborative. And they are a firm that's out of St. Louis and out of Chicago actually as well. They are also helping for the Ville, which is a cultural corridor project along Dr. Martin Luther King between Sarah and Taylor, you said it wrong, between the landmark monument, statue or sign in the Ville to John Marshall School on the west side. We'll also incorporate our other partners like the Build Back Better, who's doing the AMEC and the Kill Ark or the new Monarch Building. So we will coordinate with those efforts as well. And we'll look to coordinate other efforts with the other planning areas as well. At this point, I wouldn't like to ask any questions or comments that the commission may have.
Any questions for Miriam or Jonathan?
Have they already announced this to the communities? So you picked the Lamar Johnson in the...
No, going on tour, or not going on tour, but we are, so even this weekend, we are having a meeting in the Ville, are joining their meeting. So, yeah, we're going to start.
And Baden and North Point, that contract will be out of the, I think, here. We haven't been quite, haven't been out there in those.
Can you tell us anything about Lamar Johnson, maybe Aaron? He's been working with him already?
Lamar Johnson, so they have, actually have done work in St. Louis all over. One right now is the Clinton Peabody area just on Shoto, just south of here. They're working with the community to redevelop a lot of new housing, community spaces there. They're also doing right now, which is, yes, the Brickline Greenway too. So a portion of the, there on that. So they are familiar with planning in the city and also all the firms we think are highly, you know, we think high up all of ours. Chosen and very happy to, but yeah, Lamar Johnson.
Is it different firms for the different projects versus the same firm?
Oh, I'm sorry. For the Ville has the same lead firm with few of the team members and some of the subconsultants are different. Or the Ville Greater Hilton Kingsway East and the, or the Ville Cultural Corridor. But Walnut Park East and the Baden clusters are different consultants.
Is Aaron still on?
No, I think he had to move on.
He's still initially connected.
Can I ask him if those are the people that he brought to the Final Supply Louis Place meeting?
They are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I was just trying to make.
Yeah. So Chip and, yeah, Hallie will be a core project manager of the, I'm sorry. So yeah, Chip and Hallie were there with their.
Chip's on his team, but Hallie. And they've done some work in Chicago. The big thing we have to find out is Lamar Johnson, the head of the firm, may have been a student of mine.
The big thing. Thank you.
Other questions on this one? Don, do you have anything to close us up with? Yes. There's chocolate left. Anybody has kids and love chocolate, take it. All right. If there's no personal business, I think we're out. Take the motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Have a good evening, everyone.